All right.
Hi BJ.
It's not picking up. It's not picking up the sound.
Hi Rita.
It's there's no sound.
I have no.
Hey John, we can, I can hear you.
Oh great, thank you.
Do you want headphones to hear better?
Sure.
Where are they?
This should be in the library. We're getting art set up. Rod, just double checking, can you hear me?
Yep, I got you.
Thank you.
Honey, I don't think that's plugged in all the way for your.
No, I don't have it for my, I'll plug it in now.
Okay, just as I could hear him.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
How are you? BJ, I could hear you, but now you muted yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I got you. Now you're muted again.
Am I are? Wait a minute, I have to hold the space key down.
I don't, yeah, I don't know what your setup is.
Well, at this stage, I'm not sure either.
All right, well, so far, you're good right now. Hey Rita, I made you a co-host for this, just in case something crazy happens. Like I decide to leave the meeting earlier or something. So, and also to help manage things, this, this will be our first attempt and hopefully our last attempt to do a planning board meeting using this. The regular Zoom meeting platform, we're gonna go after this meeting, we'll go back to the webinar platform because we'll have the ability now to have people call in, which was the issue last month.
Well, I'll just keep the space bar on, isn't that strange?
Whatever you need to do.
BJ, BJ, can you hear me? This is John.
Yes, John, I can't, how, how is Martha?
She's fine, thank you.
Good, good.
The two German shepherds, say hi.
Oh, and you said they're getting older.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately. We're gonna be put down together, Betty.
I think I have to hold the space bar down.
It's gonna be a long meeting if you have to do that.
Hey Ron, it's Art, can you get me?
I got you.
Okay.
You went back to being Martha, I thought I changed your name.
So, yeah, after the operation, it's all different.
And then when you want to mute yourself, just press mute.
Okay, thanks.
Things are good, those are good.
And you know how to mute, right?
I can't, hmm.
When you're not talking, when you're not.
Yeah. My time is.
So Rita, this is gonna be a little bit different, try to keep track of who's on here in terms of planning board members, so just do your best. Once, once everybody starts getting in here, we're gonna have a lot of people on the screen. Paul's on. You're muted, Paul. Paul, Paul, you're muted, you need to unmute yourself.
How about me?
You're good.
I'm pressing down on the space bar, that seems to help, if I release it, I get muted.
Get a, get a rock or something, put a rock on it.
Yeah, gee, I don't know why it's doing that.
Paul, you, there you go.
I don't have any video of anyone.
I don't know why that would be, I can see you, Paul, we can hear you now.
They all look the same.
I can't see anyone.
We can see you.
I can see you, Paul.
That's kinda dangerous, I can't see anyone and you can see me. I'm gonna try to join again, I'm gonna go out of this and try to join again.
Okay, we'll wait for you. Hey Peter.
Hey Ron, what's for dinner, Art?
Peanut butter cookies, babe, Martha. And a nice chilled bottle of 61 Mercalay.
Ooh.
Of France.
Sounding good.
My wife's peanut butter cookies, he's feasting on.
John's chewing tobacco, by the way.
There comes Mike.
My backyard looks better than I do.
Now can you hear me?
Gotcha, can you see us, Paul?
I can see you now, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, so, I'm in business.
All right Rita, so Bill just joined, Paul's on. Mike's on.
Hello?
And.
See you, Michael.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, for those, everyone that's joining a meeting now, that's not a planning board member, if you could just mute yourselves and even turn off your camera. Until your item comes up.
Are you still on headphones?
Yes, of course.
I was on a public meeting in Maine today and got forced off of the meeting because I turned my video on.
They, they cut you off, huh?
They cut me off. I wanted to speak.
Yep. Just, just to try to limit, limit the distraction and have people's video off, that would be great. Got a lot of items on the agenda, so there'll be a lot of people on.
Ron, I'm, I'm going to go by the clock on my computer, I, it just clicked 5:59.
All right, one minute countdown.
You could sing to us, Paul, before we get to six o'clock, some music? Elevated music maybe?
Am I muted now?
No.
Oh, okay. It's confusing.
Is Peter on, Ron?
Yes, he is.
I now have six o'clock, so this meeting will come to order. This is a regular meeting of the planning board and we will start with a, a roll call. Mr. Pyrick. Joe on, Ron, can you see Joe?
I don't see him.
All right, maybe he's not on yet, Mr. Chumo.
Present.
Mrs. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Present.
Mr. Fenton. Mr. Fenton. I can see you, okay, can you, I can't hear you, Mike.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Benton is here, Mr. Nash.
Present.
And I am present. Since this is a Zoom meeting, I will point out that if you wish to speak, please raise your hand in the field of view so that I can see it and please wait to be recognized. When you are making or seconding a motion, please identify yourself. And all votes will be by roll call, voice vote. We also have a long agenda this evening, so I would like to mention the standing planning board policy of not starting an applicant submitted item after 9:00 PM. Hopefully, we can get through most of what we have on the agenda. So with that, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 3rd special meeting and the August 12th regular meeting. A motion to accept minutes of August 3rd.
So moved.
Did you identify yourselves?
BJ.
You got that, Ron?
You're muted, Ron.
Ron is muted.
Ron, yep.
Yeah, where, where else at?
Where else at?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the minutes of the special meeting of August 3rd? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 You have to call.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I have to call a roll. Forgive me. Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, minutes for August 3rd are approved. I have a motion for accepting the minutes of the August 12th meeting.
Chumo, Bill Nash.
Second.
Art Weber.
Oh.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the minutes of the regular August 12th meeting, is there any discussion? Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. A memorandum of the town plan dated August 14, 2020 regarding administrative subdivision approval for Robert A. Roket Jr. at Ox and Hiram T. Bosad involving property at 146 and 150 White Hart Avenue. Flat 121 NW lots 152 and 153 may have a motion to receive this correspondence.
Don't move.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The correspondence is received. Next item is to reschedule our November 11th meeting since that falls on a holiday. Ron asked you to come prepared with dates during the week of 11/9 and 11/13, is everyone prepared? Okay, Ron, do you have any preferences?
I don't know about a preference, but the that week, the week of the 11th, so either that Tuesday, the 10th, or Thursday, the 12th would be good options from my end.
Either is fine with me. Let me go down the membership and see how either November 10th or November 12th, Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
Good with both dates.
Good with both, okay, Mrs. Owen.
Same, both dates, fine.
Both dates are fine, Mr. Weber.
I have to pick the 12th because the 10th is on Rick or birthday, I'll be busy. Drinking beer.
Okay, so we still have the 12th. Mr. Fenton.
Both days are fine with me.
Mr. Nash.
The 10th would be best for me, I, and I'm traveling the 12th, so the 10th.
And both states are fine for me, so Art, what was your preference?
The 12th.
So we have one with a preference for the 12th and one with a preference for the 10th.
I, I can do, I, you know, 10 is fine.
Mr. Chairman. Just, just to note, right now, the zoning board has a special meeting scheduled for the 10th. Which, I got an email this afternoon, there's discussion about changing that to the 12th, and then the last email I got, which was actually from Mr. Jackson, indicated that he might not be available on that date either, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that it's
Ron, should we try?
Kind of reflects with the zoning board on those nights.
Yeah, yeah, Ron, should we try the dates in the following week?
Well, if we wanna stay that week, the only other option would be the 9th. Monday night.
The 9th is okay with me. Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
The 9th will be fine.
Mrs. Owen.
9th is okay.
Mr. Weber.
Good.
Mr. Fenton.
Okay with me.
Mr. Nash.
Yes, yes.
And it's okay with me, so it looks like Monday, November 9th.
Done, well, why don't you take a vote, just so it's official.
So may I have a motion to reschedule our next regular meeting of the planning board to Monday, November 9th?
Ron.
All moved, Bill Nash.
Second. BJ.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Peter.
I have on my calendar, and maybe Ron can confirm that the Conservation Commission may be meeting on the 9th.
I don't, I don't handle their meetings, I don't know when they meet. But unless there's a conflict, do you have to attend the Conservation Committee meeting? I don't go to those meetings.
Does.
Joe does and I do, or I can have somebody else, I can have someone else cover conservation, that's fine, I just wanna, because I know Joe's on that, so.
Yeah.
Well.
We have a motion in front of us, should we go forward with that motion, or do you wanna try the dates in the following week, Ron?
We can try the following week. So, council would be on the 16th, so we'd be looking at 17th, 18th, or 19th of November.
18th is good for me.
18th is fine.
18th or 19th is good for me.
This is John, both dates are good for me.
Okay, BJ, both okay with you?
Yes.
Good for me, Art Weber.
Okay, Mike?
Okay with me.
Bill?
None of those dates are good for me, I mean, I have challenges with every, every evening that, on that week, but I'll do the best I can to get there.
Do you want us to stay with this or go back to the previous week?
Well frankly, the 9th was better, but you know, I don't wanna be the only one that's a hangup, I'll do the best I can, 17, 18, and 19. Yeah, yeah, but I frankly prefer the 9th, but I would, I would defer to the rest of the board.
The 9th is a definite conflict for Joe, and it sounds like Peter, although he could get a substitute. What day of the week is the 18th, Ron?
It's a Wednesday, so that, actually, if we could go with that, at least it'd be a consistent day of the week that we're meeting on a Wednesday.
Yeah, let's meet on, let's meet on the 18th. Is that okay with everyone?
That's fine with me, this is John.
All right, I may have a motion. Do, can we just disregard the motion that's on the table, or do we have to boil it down?
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you, we have a motion to reschedule our next regular meeting to Wednesday, November 18th.
Motion made, Art.
Do I have a second?
Second, John Chuma.
Motion's made and seconded to reschedule our next regular meeting to Wednesday, November 18th, any discussion? Mr. Pyrick. Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Okay.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Yes.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the motion passes and our next regular scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 18th. Next item on the agenda are continuances, we have a number of continuances tonight, first one is item 5A. Public hearing, application of Jack Gullison for development plan review including requests for waivers from certain design standards of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land, section 521 for construction of a new commercial building to include an 18-room hotel with a restaurant and associated site work located on property identified as 59 Aquidneck Avenue assesses plat 115 SE Lot 169. We have a motion to continue this to our next regular meeting on November 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Pyrick. Ron, I'm, I'm going to drop his name, but would you let me know if he runs the meeting?
I'll try, there's a lot of people on, so I, I can't see everybody at once, so if I see him pop on, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
I vote aye, item 5A is continued to the November 18th meeting. The next item is 5B to be continued. Public hearing, request of James Paradise, owner of property at 170 Aquidneck Avenue flat 115 SE lots 145, 146, 147 for waiver of development plan review pursuant to section 908 of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land. May I have a meeting to continue this to our next regular meeting of November 18th?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chuma.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Eric just came hard.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, item 5B is continued to our next.
Oh, Joe came on.
He goes back.
Joe is on, helpful.
Joe is on, participate in the next vote. The motion passes to continue item 5B to the next regular meeting on November 18th. Joe, are you now on?
You're muted, Joe.
You're muted.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, be advised that we have voted to hold our next regular meeting on Wednesday, November 18th.
Thank you.
We are, we are working on item three on the agenda. We are, we are working on item three on the agenda. We have continued items five A and five B and are now addressing item five C. Public hearing, application of GD Middletown West Main one LLC for development plan review, including request for waiver from certain design standards of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land, section five two one, and recommendation for zoning review regarding special use permit application for development in zone one of the watershed protection district to allow construction of a ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation on a property located at seventeen forty-seven West Main Road, plat one eleven nine, nine eight, lot nine eight.
We'll continue the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion that's made and seconded to continue item five C to our next regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Mr. Perrick.
Vote aye for continued.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item five C is continued to our next regular meeting on November eighteen. The next item to be continued on the list is item six C. The public hearing, application of Newport County YMCA for development plan review, including requests for waivers from certain design standards of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land, section five two one, to allow renovation and expansion of an existing building located on property at seven ninety-two Valley Road, plat one fifteen, lot one. May I have a motion to continue this to a special meeting on November fourth?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Silva is on and he may wish to speak on this for
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Good, good evening, everyone. I was just wondering, after the date of the fourth of November, which was a Wednesday, was suggested as the next special meeting date. I had some information from some of my witnesses that that day would be difficult, and I was wondering if Ron could review the responses and find out whether or not the next day would be similarly available to the board as well, which would be Thursday, the fifth.
I looked at that, Bob. The fifth, we're missing two, two members of the, of the planning board would not be available for the fifth based on the poll.
Okay, well, that ends, that ends that discussion. They're more important than my witnesses.
Thank you.
We will, we will accommodate the situation and I'll, I'll make sure that I'm ready to go forward on the fourth. With respect to Mr. Nate Godfrey, I'll submit his report in writing.
Could you get it to as, as soon as you can, Mr. Silva?
He dropped off in the box tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Any further discussion on this motion? Mr. Perrick.
Vote aye to continue.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So item six C is continued to a special meeting on November fourth.
Six p.m. Paul.
Yes. The next item is item six E. Public information meeting, application of Iran Building Company for master plan approval of a seven lot subdivision, including a proposed new road and request for waivers from certain provisions of Article five and Article six of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land. Property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Green End Avenue and Walkluse Avenue and is identified as two zero eight Holland Avenue, tax assesses plat one two nine lot fifty-three. The issue is that this is likely to have a lot of discussion. There are a number of individuals who have expressed interest in speaking at this item. It's late on the agenda, today's agenda, and we likely will not get to it tonight. So what I would like to propose is that we continue it to the special meeting on the fourth, subject to Ron conducting a poll to find an appropriate date for a special meeting to discuss this item.
So the, the thought being that it would be continued to the, to the November fourth special meeting just for control purposes. It'll be on that agenda. However, the only purpose it'll be on the agenda for is to actually schedule the special meeting, which will be held obviously after November fourth at some point. So between now and then we would be, I would be working with the, the board members, the applicant and others that need to be available to participate in the hearing to, to find a date that works best for everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Jay Lynch, representing the, the applicant. I know my client is anxious to move this along. If we could put it on, since we are having a special meeting on the fourth, if we could also put it on the agenda and if you do have time, if we could start the hearing on the fourth, when you're done with the YMCA matter.
Well, we will be continuing it to the meeting on the fourth and we can certainly consider that in the interim, Jay.
That's fine.
Well, if that's the thought that the board is willing to actually hear it that night, we want to make that clear tonight because there are many people, I think, that are on this call that want to know what's going on. So if the board thinks that there may be, maybe a hearing actually on the fourth on this, I think we should, you know, indicate that right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Matt Lees, I represent Robert Sylvia, who owns fourteen ninety-nine Green End Avenue, which is a direct abutter to the subject property. He's also an owner as a member of a family partnership of lots fifty-two and forty-nine on plat one twenty-nine, which together comprise eight and a half acres of a former family farm property that is adjacent to the subject property. You know, my, my client wanted to express, he's not trying to prevent the Noons family from selling or doing any development at all on the property. However, this is in a very environmentally sensitive area.
Matt, Matt, hold on. We're, we're not going to get into testimony at this point.
No, I understand, I understand that, Ron. I just, I was, I was hoping to make a point about some referrals to, to some town commissions. They should review this application for the board as a hearing on it. Therefore, I was just referring to, you know, the environmentally sensitive nature of this area with Little Creek running through it, which flows into Onit River, the Wetlands. It's a very historically significant landscape. And based on that and based on the requirements of the regulations, we believe, and I think others, other objectors who are here tonight also believe that this application should be referred to the Middletown Conservation Commission, your Open Space and Fields Committee, and your Tree Commission with those comments from those commissions received before a decision is made by this planning board even on master plan. Also, we think there should be comments received from DEM, CRMC, and the Towns Consulting Engineers, Crossman Engineering, even before the master plan decision is made based on some of the decisions that will be, have, have to be made at the master plan phase. And as I say, I believe, I believe there are other objectors here tonight who feel the same. So I just wanted to make that point, you know, before any decision is made regarding when a hearing is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Art.
I must have missed something. Master plan is a couple of lines on a map, period. There's no detail. There's no relevant discussion about any details relative to the things that have been discussed by this particular attorney. So to me, it's chatter to be, all this other stuff thrown in. Master plan is as basic as it gets. So I don't really see why we need to continue this thing. We should only take testimony relevant to what is on that grid plat plan we have, period.
In the interest of moving this along, may I suggest that we continue this to the November fourth meeting for control purposes. And in the interim, we will find a time to discuss this item.
I'll make that motion. So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Bill Nash, I believe, and seconded by BJ. Any discussion?
Paul.
Yes.
Can I chime in?
Sure, Joe.
Well, this, this matter came before us last night on the Conservation Commission. And as Art skillfully said, it was kind of a master plan review. It's a highly sensitive area. I think everyone on the Conservation Commission acknowledged that. I think it needs a lot more discussion, a lot more review, a lot more detail. Has this property been scheduled or have we, you know, maybe I missed out on it. Have we conducted a, I, I think a site visit with all of us would be very beneficial.
There, there was a site.
We did conduct the site.
We did, so I missed it. Sorry. All right. I'll, I'll be speaking to it later when we, I give you the Conservation Commission updates.
Can I ask one question as a, as a chair?
Please move the, move the question, please.
We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I, I would just repeat what I said earlier. This is like a really base conceptual thing with some lines on a map, period. That's all it is.
Any other discussion on the motion? The motion is to continue this item to the November fourth meeting for control purposes until a date can be found to hear it. Any further discussion? Mr. Perrick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
No.
Mr. Fenton.
Yes.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes six one. I believe that completes the continuances.
Yes.
So the next item is item five D. A public hearing, application of Morrison Farm LLC for preliminary plan approval of a six lot major subdivision of land fronting on Morrison Avenue and Aquidneck Avenue, assesses plat one fourteen lot eight twenty and located approximately five hundred feet to the east of the intersection of Morrison Avenue and Aquidneck Avenue. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Bill Nash.
Who made the motion?
Second, John Chumo.
Who made the motion?
I did, Paul. Bill Nash.
And John, you seconded?
That's correct.
Any discussion? Mr. Perrick. This is a vote to open the public hearing.
I vote aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The public hearing is open.
Before we get started, Mr. Chairman, with the applicant, I'll just indicate that to the board that, and you should have received a memo dated October eighth, which was after the initial staff memo. The memo on October eighth provides you with the outcome of the TRC meeting with the recommended conditions.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Martland, representing Morrison Farm LLC. Thank you for convening this evening. This, this matter has been pending for, for quite a period of time. We were last before the board back in, in the summer, I believe, of two thousand and nineteen, at which point we obtained approval, master plan approval for the six lot major subdivision that has been laid out in a conventional style as opposed to a conservation style subdivision. At that time, the board granted approval of the six lot subdivision subject to certain conditions. One regarding the capacity of the public sewer system to accommodate the proposed development, which would be provided as part of the, as part of the preliminary plan submission that we would make the appropriate notes on, on the plans with respect to impact fees and filed, following the town code chapter one fifty, that the stormwater runoff sub pump runoff would be routed and tied into the drainage system. That a note would be added to plan stating that owners of proposed lots five and six would be responsible for maintenance of the proposed shared driveway unless and until a public street is constructed and accepted for town maintenance. If you would recall, the, the lots in the rear, lots five and six, we're going to gain access via a a right of way that would be designated as such, but we obtained waivers for that right of way for construction. And what was going to be proposed was a roadway or a driveway rather with a crushed stone type of construction. And those lots in the rear would be responsible for that maintenance. That is actually shown on the plans and that's what's proposed. The five is a feasible easement extending to the abutting property line would be provided at the end of the proposed right of way. That's been added to the plans as submitted so that if the, the abutting property ever wanted to access that for town road purposes, they would have that ability. That's the, the property that borders on the north owned by Stephen and Barbara Feria, lot two oh five A. The the next condition in the master plan approval was that the proposed shared driveway would have a driving surface with a minimum of fourteen feet in width, sufficient turning radii, subject to approval by the fire department at the preliminary plan stage. That's been provided on the plans. Additionally, condition seven was, is not a firm condition, but was a suggestion that the, the applicant provide and investigate and give serious consideration to providing a proposed subdivision lots with public water. If the board would recall when we initially presented the master plan subdivision, all the, the homes were going to be reliant on wells. The, given the, the board's concern with that, the applicant, Mr. LaRusso, did, did undertake and investigate and give that serious consideration to extending the water. Initially, what he was proposing and the initial submission that had been approved by the Newport Water was actually to bring the, the water in to the lots without extending the main and the street. Through the technical review committee process, the feedback was that that the town would prefer to see that the water be extended in Morrison Avenue so that the, the main was extended and that would be available for would be available for the, the budding property owners on the, the other side of Morrison to tap into, should they ever have the need. So the plans have been revised to provide for that water line extension. So the existing water line in Morrison is sort of on that portion of, of Morrison that runs in a north-south direction. It's going to be pulled down the the section of Morrison that runs east-west to the to the point where the proposed right of way is located. There will also be I don't know, valves or stubs or whatever put into the water line so that the properties across the street on the southerly side of Morrison would be able to tie into those. And then the, the final condition on that master plan approval was to provide a fence along the northerly property line, which was a request of the Farias. That fence has been provided on the preliminary plans. So, so those were the conditions and they've been addressed in the, in the preliminary plan and through the technical review committee process. I believe the board and Ron mentioned has received for tonight's hearing, a memorandum which indicates that the technical review committee has reviewed the application and provided a positive recommendation to the planning board, subject to certain conditions. And, yeah, we, we worked with, with the town engineer and the Department of Public Works to work through certain concerns that they had relative to the drainage. And I've got with me this evening, Tom Principi, who can well asked to, to really go through and explain that drainage system, but they were eight conditions that were laid out by the technical review committee, all of which are perfectly acceptable, reasonable and and, and should be made a condition of any type of approval that the, the board would consider. So that, that is kind of the background. Or one additional note on the background is that we were before the Conservation Commission last night. And we received a positive recommendation from the Conservation Commission. I don't think that the board has written comments from the Conservation Commission, but Board Member Pyrick was, was at the, that meeting and I think he could speak to to that this evening.
Dave, we actually did get a memo late today from the chairman, Jim Gedney, which I neglected to send to you, but it does indicate that, that they approved contingent on the original plan, including requiring a swale around the perimeter of the project facing Morrison Avenue and creating legal and maintenance protections to assure that retention basins and grading are not altered in the future. So I think that, that was covered through the conditions of the TRC.
Yes, that, that's correct. And that was one of the, the big issues in, in the TRC is that the, the drainage system that, that's proposed here, it provides for, for all the appropriate water quality treatment as well as the detention and mitigation of stormwater runoff. But you know, rightfully, the town engineer and the public works wanted to, to, to make certain that there would be no impact to Morrison Avenue or to the abutters. And through that process, they required that there, there be a system of swales located around the property perimeter to mitigate that runoff, capture it. And also to provide easements over the bio retention areas and the swales. So that the, the, the town, if it deemed necessary to go in and inspect and require any corrective or remedial action take place. Yeah, we, I'll, I'll have to still draft those, those documents. That would be part of the final plan process and subject to the review by the solicitor. But yeah, that was a significant issue and concern at the TRC level. With that, if I could ask that, that Tom Principi maybe walk through the, the, the drainage plan and the utility, utilities, which were really the only changes from a, from a permitting perspective between the master plan and, and, and this preliminary plan. All of, all of that engineering work has now been done and which, which took a, a period of time. And then of course, of course, we kind of also hit the, the delay caused by the COVID-19, but Tom, are you, are you on?
I'm here, Dave. Can you hear me?
Okay. I can.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Principi, Principi Engineering Company. Again, Dave did a great job kind of going through the memo and some of the conditions that were proposed for this project. And again, I'll just go through some of the major elements, one being drainage. I'll touch base on the water and, and, you know, our correspondence with Newport Water Authority as well as the sewer. And then I could be happy to answer any of the board's questions that they might have. So first with the drainage, again, like Dave indicated, we went back and forth a few times with the TRC and the towns engineer, the overall drainage for the site. You know, just with any site, we assure that there is no increase in stormwater runoff post-construction for the development itself. So when we analyze that information, our design includes separate bio retention basins for each individual house. Again, we have six proposed lots, so six proposed houses. Each house will have their own separate bio retention basin itself. And again, to further mitigate that through correspondence with the town engineer, we also created additional swales to divert some of that additional stormwater runoff towards the control point that we have for the site to assure that there is no additional stormwater runoff post-construction for this project. And the other element is the shared driveway that services the rear lots on A5 and A6. That driveway is going to be 14 feet wide and it's going to be composed of crushed stone. So we'll have very little runoff on that. That was incorporated into our overall hydraulic analysis on the overall site itself. Again, as Dave indicated, we're going to have easements for the swales and bio retention areas to ensure that the property owners, again, don't regrade and properly maintain. The biggest thing is maintenance on these bio retention areas. So we're going to make sure that that's recorded on the deed for these properties itself. The other element, utility here is obviously our public water. Dave touched on. We went back and forth with Newport Water. We had a few different concepts. One on the older concept, the board might remember is we had one concept running in the northerly direction through the parcel behind A1. But again, further correspondence with the board and the TRC and working with Newport Water. We have, we revise the location of that water line. As you can see on the screen now, that Ron has called up. It is running southerly along the lots A1 through A4. That will be underneath the pavement, but Newport Water requires us to have this new water main under the pavement. So it does require us to widen the road, which is a good thing there. It's not that wide in this location. So we're going to widen it approximately three feet to town standards on the base. We talked to the DPW and he reviewed all those elements of the project itself. Again, touching base again on the water extension, we will be putting in laterals and stubs to have the property owners to the south connect in the future if they would like for the public water itself and also adding another hydrant at the intersection of the shared driveway for fire protection purposes. The other element is our sewer. Again, working with DPW, I believe back in the seventies when that sewer line was installed, conveniently enough, which it usually doesn't work out that way, there are existing laterals that we have from as-built plans that are located as shown on the preliminary plans in front of you this evening. And we're utilizing those existing laterals that are already installed on that sewer line. The only additional sewer infrastructure we're going to be putting in are two sewer manholes along the shared driveway to tie in lots A4, A5 and A6. And again, that was all reviewed by the DPW and our TRC meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
BJ.
Yes, I don't know if the board remembers that when this first came to us, I was commenting on lots A1 and A2. And they seemed to me to be so gerrymandered. I've never seen such crazy lots before and I really didn't like them. And I brought them to the attention of the board at that time. I still am very concerned about those two lots. It, it's just, it looks crazy to me. I don't know how others feel. I'm not very happy with those two.
Okay. Other comments from members of the board?
Yeah, Paul, I have a question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. So just to go for BJ's, I don't necessarily have an issue with the, the configuration of the lots. There's obviously a reason. Maybe Tom or Dave can touch on that briefly. But I'm, two questions. One, I sat in on the TRC meeting last week and I'd like you to go over the, I don't have the memo in front of me. For some reason it didn't come through. I'd like to kind of go through those eight conditions. Just make sure you, you've, you've addressed them. But I, I also recall discussion about the size of the proposed homes and that, that, that some of the numbers were, maybe, maybe I'm getting it mixed up with another, another petition. But that the size of the, I, I know that on the plan, they're showing maximum potential of a home. I know that's not the size that would be there, but is that right, Tom? Was there discussion on the size that you, if you go, if you go beyond that and some homes may?
Yep, that's, that's correct, Bill. So if you look at Ron's screen at the top left corner under project notes.
Yep.
I don't know, Ron, if you could zoom in on that? So we added a note over there on the left-hand side, project notes. I think, Billy, you're referencing the note number three.
Oh, yeah. No, yep.
So specifically, again, I mean, we don't know what size houses are going to be built here. This is conceptual. So as far as stormwater management and hydraulic analysis on the BMPs, you know, we used a pretty decent sized footprint of what could be built. I mean, again, the footprint itself is over 2,000 square feet. So technically, these are all 4,000 square foot homes. So we're not saying that's what's going to be built there, but it's, it's a pretty conservative assumption. Which again, I think we agreed at the TRC to add this note into the plan because the next step is, as we all know, you know, the town is subject to the erosion control and the town permitting process when they apply for these building permits. So when that's done, us as the engineers will review the actual footprint that the client or the owner of the property would like to utilize and we will have to evaluate and see if that fits within the parameters of the hydrology.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I appreciate that. I, I'd like you to address each of the conditions, but as as we blew this up, a question came to mind on the downspouts. Are they tied in to the?
Yes.
Yes.
That is also a note there on, so sheet four, I mean, project note number four.
Yep, that's.
If you look at sheet eight of eight, again, the downspouts, connection details for the individual houses, we're showing them tied in. That's correct.
Right. Thank you. Would you mind just touching on those conditions for us?
So the, the conditions, I, I believe Dave went over those conditions earlier.
Master plan, I believe.
So Dave?
Yeah. I, I went, I went through the master plan conditions, but if I could, yeah, there were eight conditions referenced by the TRC. The, the first condition is prior to final plan approval, the applicant must provide easements covering stormwater drainage system swales and bio retention areas. Such easements must be reviewed and approved by the town solicitor prior to file, final plan approval. It'd be referenced on the plans and be in the covenants and legal documentation. So that, that is something that I would be drafting and providing to the town solicitor for review and approval. And it would, you know, provide for the easements over those, those areas and also provide certain requirements for, for the maintenance of, of those areas as well as maintaining the contours associated with the, the, the bio retention areas as, as well as the swales. The second condition is prior to final plan approval, the town engineer must review and approve stormwater management plan. So the, the final plan. So that's something that Tom Principi would be submitting to, to Warren for his, his final review. The third condition, prior to final plan approval, they would have to be compliance with chapter 153 of the stormwater management to be confirmed by the town engineer and the town solicitor. Within chapter 153, there are a number of requirements for maintenance and inspection. And those would be referenced as part of the easement and covenants and legal documentation that would be recorded. Additionally, I, I think there was one open item that, I shouldn't even say one open item, that Warren wanted to, the town engineer wanted to just review again the requirements of 153 to make sure that we were in full compliance with, 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 with all issues. Four, prior to final plan approval, the applicant would coordinate with the abutters to, to connect to the proposed water main. That's something that we indicated at the TRC that, that we would do so that when there was the water main extension, you know, those I guess stubs could be, be put in for a future connection. Number five, a sewer lateral operations and maintenance agreement must be reviewed and approved by the Director of Public Works. And that, that was for those connections where there is a shared use, for instance, lots five, six and four will share one lateral. Six, a note added to the plan indicating that lower access shall be from Aquidnic Avenue to proposed lot six A. Presently, there, there is a driveway, a gravel driveway from Aquidnic Avenue that accesses this property as part of the DOT permit that was issued in connection with this project. DOT wanted that driveway access closed off. And that's also a requirement or proposed condition from the TRC. Seven, pavement restoration details meeting town standards must be added to the plan for Morrison Avenue prior to final plan approval. And we would conform to that. Again, the, you know, they'll in, in Morrison, the there'll be the extension of the, the water line. So in accordance with the town standards, we're going to, the applicant is going to have to repave Morrison up to the center line. And so that, that notation will be added to the construction details on the final.
Whatever.
Numbers. And the final condition is the stormwater management plan shall require annual testing of the bio retention areas. If results indicate failure, If results indicate failure. Immediate corrective action must be taken. Language to that will be included in the plan. And I think that also ties in with the, the maintenance and inspection requirements of chapter 153. So we would be putting together. Those final documents for the final plan approval. But those, those are the eight. Conditions.
You all set with that, Bill?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Dave. And I just, Tom, if you maybe go back and touch on, or Dave, the. Configuration of the lots to, for BJ's knowledge and myself, I guess, or others.
I'm very concerned about that.
Yeah, so it's, so initially. We, we had proposed or showed to the board two, two layouts. One was a conservation style subdivision. Which had six lots all fronting on Morrison Avenue. And I believe. I forget the, the minimum lot size requirement for the conservation. It's somewhere between. Seven and 10,000 square feet, but they all met the, the minimum. Lot size requirement, but you had six of them all along Morrison Avenue. We also proposed a subdivision. That provided for lots of at least 20,000 square feet, which then. You would only have four of the lots fronting on Morrison Avenue. When two of the lots that would be located toward the rear. We thought that this provided. Sort of a, a less dense looking development. Although you, you do end up with, you know, an odd lot configuration. Four lots, A one and A two. You know, and I do remember discussing that at length. During the, the master plan approval. That's correct. We did have, have those discussions. And that was the only way to. Propose this type of conservation or not conservation, but conventional style subdivision. And, you know, that. You know, we, we received the approval for that with this lot configuration. And, you know, the applicant is, you know, then went through the. Significant process of doing all of the, the engineering based on that. And obtaining approvals from DOT, DEM. Well, I don't think. No, there was DEM and the. And the city of Newport for the waterline extension. Tom, do you want to address the, the lot configuration?
Yeah, I, I concur with that, Dave. And again, just to touch base on that as well. So A one and A two, again, I, I mean, I, I agree. You know, BJ is saying, but, but again, Dave, Dave kind of went over pretty well on the historical side of things, but. Again, in the zone in our 20, 20,000 square foot lots required in the conventional subdivision, which is in front of you this evening. Our lot width or the frontage is 120, 120 feet wide. So. If you look at, you know, the frontage that we have for A one and the frontage we have for A two, A three and A four. You know, it kind of gets backed into that overall geometric configuration of what we have to work with. So if we were to take, and, and we did, you know, do a few different versions of this. But again, if we were to take out. Some square footage with A one, we wouldn't have, you know, enough frontage. For A one. And again, vice versa, if we take out square footage for A two and give it to A one. It's kind of a balanced game between meeting the minimum 20,000 square foot requirement. And also meeting the 120 foot frontage requirement itself. Which kind of backed us into this overall design. Again, it's just what we have to work with itself.
Couldn't you combine? A part of A one and A two and extend over A three? So, and so you would eliminate one lot, but still. You'd have a much better looking development.
Again, I guess, I guess you could eliminate one lot. I mean, again, we could always eliminate lots, but I mean, again. You know, based on the conservation development and the concept we had in front of the board prior to this, we actually had six. Single family lots on Morrison Avenue and now we have four. So we thought that this was a much better concept moving forward.
Are there other comments from members of the planning board?
Mr. Chairman. I, I just got a question. Who is the genius that decided utilities need to be in the middle of the road? Instead of the laterals because digging up a road is a lot more work than taking care of something else. It seems, it seems counterintuitive to be digging up a road if you have to repair utility in the middle of it instead of on the lateral. Which would probably be easier and more efficient. I just throw that out. Who can, who can enlighten me on that particular piece of work?
That a town requirement or a state requirement?
Well, in this case, the water, the water line is Newport Waters jurisdiction and they require it to be in the road.
So what do they have a cousin in the construction business or what?
It has to do with access. They need to be able to access and it's not just water for sewer lines and whatnot. They need to be, be able to easily access. The lines and the closer you get into the properties, the more difficult that becomes, even though. Being in the road, I mean, you have to dig up the road.
Okay, thanks.
Other planning board member comments? Dave and Tom, I have a, a question. Do I remember correctly that when we were on the site visit for this, it was pointed out that. Some of the neighbors. Had some concerns about flooding on Morrison Avenue with runoff from this property. And if so, has that been remedied?
Yes, you are absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. There were residents that were concerned about that. Runoff in particular at runoff going into lot 208. As well as runoff potentially going into Morrison Avenue. So through, through the process. The Department of Public Works and the town engineer. Required swales be located along some of those property lines as well as along. Morrison Avenue. In, in certain locations to, to assure that. The stormwater doesn't run off into Morrison Avenue and in particular during the, the winter months where, you know, if, if. You know, there was melt that got into Morrison, it could freeze. So that, that was a, a concern and was dealt with. Through that process. So that, that would no, that would not, not occur.
Thank you. Other, other comments from members of the planning board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Joe Perick. The town engineer Warren Hall brought up that specific point last night in the Conservation Commission review of this application. And communicated pretty clearly that. The concerns of the abutters was adequately addressed by the. Addition of those drainage features that Mr. Martland just talked about.
Thank you. Other comments from members of the planning board? Anyone? From the public who wishes to comment on this application? Ron, can you see if there's anyone who wishes to speak?
You're on mute, Ron. Ron, you're muted.
If there, if there's anyone on the, on the call or on this, in this meeting from the public that wishes to speak on this item, feel free to unmute yourself and just introduce yourself. Guess not.
Wow. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Who made the motion?
BJ.
BJ, who seconds?
Art Weber.
Motion's made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Mr. Perick.
Hi.
Mr. Chumo. Mr., Mrs. Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Weber.
Hi.
Mr. Fenton.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote aye. The public hearing is closed. May I have a motion for a favorable recommendation?
This would be. It'd be a motion to approve the preliminary plan. Subject to the conditions that were outlined earlier, the recommended conditions from the TRC as well as. Addressing. The required findings. I was going to say waivers, but the waivers are already approved at the master plan stage, so it's.
Second.
Seconded by Art Weber. Is there any discussion? Mr. Perick.
Hi.
Mr. Chumo. Mrs. Owen.
No.
Mr. Weber.
Hi.
Mr. Fenton.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
I vote aye. Motion passes six, one.
Thank you. For, for purposes of the, the, the final plan approval, is that a. Is that it? Done administratively or do we file a full application?
You would file a full application, however, as we've learned fairly recently. Not that this is a newer requirement, but. Under the statute, a final plan application for a major subdivision can be approved administratively. Provided that all the requirements are met in the submission and all the conditions have been addressed. So it is a full final plan submission. But administrative approval is possible.
Okay.
All right, if that's the case, you communicate that to us, right? That you, you can do that. You will do that.
Right. And if for some reason, after reviewing the submission, I feel the need to refer it to the full board, I can do that.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, David.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item five E. Public hearing request by RK Centers for waivers from certain design standards of, of the middle town rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land. Section 521. For expansion of a driveway and associated site work located at 288 East Main Road. Plat 113, lot 15A. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So, most Bill Nash.
Second.
Bill made the motion. Who seconded?
Me.
BJ, thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Perick.
Hi.
Mr. Chumo. Mrs. Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Weber.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
I vote aye. The public hearing is open. Is there someone to speak for this application?
Yeah, Russ, Russ Jackson's on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Russell Jackson, Miller Scott Holbrook and Jackson on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
This is a relatively simple. Request for a waiver from the commercial development design standards. In the northwest corner of this parcel. Behind the commercial building, and again, this is the RK Center. Retail and commercial. Property. In the northwest corner behind the building is an area where delivery trucks routinely have to. To get to the rear of the building to make deliveries. The corner is tight as it currently exists. The owner has discovered that over time. Delivery trucks have brushed against the existing chain link fence causing damage. And just generally have difficulty making that turn. So what's being proposed is to expand the paved area closer to the property line. And the expansion of the paved area. Requires a waiver so that the, to encroach into the otherwise required 10-foot landscaped buffer. As you can see from the plans that are up on the screen now. It is a relatively small area in general. And the area where the encroachment into the landscape buffer is, is. Again, even smaller since it's a, it's an arched or curved area that is. Proposed to be expanded with paving. In addition to the expand, expanded paved area, the, the applicant will be constructing. A retaining wall underneath that newly paved area to support. You know, the vehicular traffic that will be utilizing this more generous corner to navigate the turn. So again, the waiver is, is really, it's just the one waiver to reduce the landscaped buffer. Where it is otherwise required to be 10 feet and it's going to be down to, I believe, 1.4 feet at its closest. Area to the property line. So that's a general description of what's being proposed. I do, if there are any technical questions, I do have. Jesse Johnson is on this Zoom call with Bowler Engineering and. If there are any technical questions regarding construction or the layout, I'm sure he will be happy to address them. But again, this is generally. A request for the waiver of the landscape buffer.
Yes, and I wish to remind the members of the planning board that that is the only issue that we are dealing with, the request for the waiver.
I would like to know if the tree commission had any input on this.
This was not referred to the tree commission because there's no landscaping plan involved. It's, it's strictly again, a request to waive that ability to. Bring that retaining wall, you can see on the, on the plan on the screen to within about a foot and a half of the, of the property line. Where, where 10 feet would be required.
The comments from the planning board members?
Hold on, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. So. Two things. Want to do the easy one first for me. I, I know we don't have much jurisdiction on this, but I'll just ask the question. You're proposing a chain link fence on the top there. I, I'd like you to consider maybe using a. Some light materials for the area chain link doesn't, is the most attractive. Fence. So I'd like to, I'd like you to consider the applicant to consider a, an alternate fence. Post rail fence, something to that effect. That's one. But two, more importantly, the, the drop off there behind that wall. It drops off pretty quickly and I just, without kind of seeing it, and I'm looking at the. Detailed plan, three of four. It's, there's no dimensions on it. But the drop off is pretty steep. I just want to see. I guess, maybe, maybe you can explain how it exists now. Versus the drop off. I guess it's still going to be there, but I guess I have a more of a concern maybe extending that fence. To prevent people or, or vehicles frankly, from. Maybe traversing off there, but it does drop off pretty steeply. That, that's all.
I don't know, Jesse, if you want to give any comment. To Mr. Nash's concerns?
Sure. Jesse Johnson, Bowler Engineering, civil engineering consultant for the applicant. So I'll, I'll touch upon the first issue with the chain link fence. There's actually a chain link fence that exists there now. So we're looking to continue it and replace. The chain link fence to keep it basically in kind with the material that's there. Regarding the wall itself, there's an existing drop off, as you mentioned, it's about. Nine feet from the top of where the edge of the pavement is now to the toe of the slope near the property line. And that's essentially what we have to maintain for the ultimate height of the wall as well. We weren't able to lower the grade of the pavement area to try to take some of the curse out of that wall, if you will. Just because it's not a, it's not a big extension out. It's just enough to make. The tractor trailers be able to take that turn easier. So we did truck moving. Our truck turn movements to analyze that and designed this curve exactly to what a WB 67 would require. And backed into our design from there and that required the nine-foot retaining wall. But however, we had the same concerns as you about safety of vehicles. So we have a guide rail. That's also proposed. So the first line of defense is the guide rail. Then you have the fence and then you get to the retaining wall. So we put in a couple of measures to try to prevent and help with the safety factor there.
Right, thank you. So the fence, the fence will be connected. Are you are you replacing the existing fence that I I can see it now on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so that will prevent any any people. It's already there now. How about on the other side in the back of the property where where the end of the retaining wall is? The end of the curb being in end of the fencing? Is there? Is there a way there that we could maybe extend the fence? Not, yeah, I guess I just asked that.
Yeah, we're we're flush there. Well, that's at grade. And if you're worried about maybe somebody trying to just sneak behind there and, you know, play around on the wall, there's really no way to prevent anybody for anybody from coming at, you know, basically from the toe of the the hill coming up and getting up in there. Or even on the backside of the building, if you will, on the right hand side. If somebody wants to walk along there and go between the fence and the wall, I don't think there's any way we could secure that. So we basically just extended the the fence to where it was prior and to where it meets existing grade with the wall.
Want to remind everyone, we're dealing with the waiver request only.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Sure.
Other comments from members of the board? I'd like to make a comment. When I look at the wheel tracks that are shown on diagram.
Paul, excuse me, I got muted out somehow. Can I make just a quick comment?
You go ahead.
I think you know I'm a stickler on waivers. However, this seems to be a real world, simple issue that could be solved in a variety of ways to make something a little bit easier that is out of sight and really not seen, and the fence will be continued like it is. So I I I think this is a fairly basic and simple, at least for me and my my observation. Thank you.
I go back to my comment. When I look at the wheel paths shown on the drawing C nine oh one, it looks like even with these changes, it's still a very tight curve to negotiate for the semi trailer. So I would support the reduced width for for the waiver request. But I do have a question. How how large is the guardrail along that curve? Just out of curiosity.
As far as the height?
Yes.
It's standard guide rail design, like you'd see at the along the road. Highway design.
It's a pretty tight curve for semis. Is that adequate?
Well, the what we designed it for was the WB sixty seven. That is the largest truck on the road. Not always what's used back there, but that's what we designed everything to, to be conservative. Typically, the cabs are a little bit shorter and they have a little bit more forgiveness, if you will, on those those curves. And then the other thing, the programs that most engineers use auto turn is very conservative. They have a built in safety factor for doing the analysis.
I I don't, I didn't want to get into it a lot. I'm satisfied with what you said and will support the waiver. Any other comments from members of the planning board? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Please identify yourself. Are you, do you want, somebody came up on the screen. I don't know if you wish to speak or not. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
I don't see anybody, Paul.
Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made.
Who made the motion, BJ or Art?
Both.
She she can do it. I'll second it.
Okay, BJ made the motion, Art seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Pirick, this is a motion to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo. Mr. Chumo.
He's muted.
Is he muted?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to advance a waiver as requested?
So moved.
Second.
Bill made the motion and Art seconded?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The waiver is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is item five F. And before we get into that one, I wish to make a comment that items five G and five H will be moved to the end of the new business agenda. So that after we finish discussion of five F, we'll go right into new business with item six A. So item five F. Review and provide recommendation to the town council on potential amendments to zoning ordinance section three zero six regarding development plan review. Uses subject to and exempt from development plan review. Ron, do you want to introduce this topic?
I'm sure. This goes back to a discussion that the board had several months ago about a desire to, I guess, modify the the procedures for considering development plan review applications. There was discussion of having the town planner take more of a role in making a determination as to whether a particular development application meets the thresholds for the development plan review, full development plan review process. Whereas right now, the way it's written, it was, it's the building and zoning official that makes that determination. The second issue was regarding the level of project, the amount of work being done that would trigger a full development plan review application. Again, with the discussion being that there was a desire to have give the planning board oversight of more types of applications that might involve, for example, facade alterations. Whereas right now facade alterations do not trigger development plan review, and if someone complies with all of the design standards, it doesn't go to the planning board. So in this case, as drafted, these amendments would require that alterations to facades except for things like simple reciting, painting, and that sort of thing. Any other more substantial alterations where you're changing roof line or you know, adding some some structural elements to the facade that we've seen on recent proposals, those would would now, if this was adopted, trigger development plan review, meaning that it would go to the planning board for full review. And then the third proposal is to require that any project seeking whether it's development plan review or other town approvals, including building permits that have rooftop equipment either existing or proposed, that that equipment needs to be screened from view. Currently, the development plan regulations require any any new project, any new equipment as part of a development plan review project be screened. But we're not now able to get at some of the existing situations out there, which I think we've discussed recently on a couple of site visits. So those are the three, I guess, in a broad brush, the three concepts that we're trying to incorporate into a revision to the regulations. So that's what you have in front of you. I don't know if Peter has had a chance to review these yet. If not, I guess, you know, the question would be just, does the board wish to give the opportunity for the solicitor to review before going any further with this? The next step, the the next official step, I guess, in terms of action would be for the board to send the proposals forward to the town council for consideration.
Any comments from members of the board?
I support it.
Thank you.
Paul, Mike. Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so we've been reviewing similar things already, like the facade upgrades or changes, the required waivers. And you know, let's say well, maybe even something like a rooftop equipment and stuff like that. What's different about this? You know, what are we asking here that's different?
Let me mention two, two applications that came before us. The Ocean Point Church and the old Rite Aid pharmacy. Both of those came in with requests for waivers only on the material used society, but both of them changed the facade in the process. And we could not address the facade question only the request for waiver. So what this does is allow us to get involved with the design of the facade as well as just the waiver for use of materials.
Okay.
Other comments?
I support it, though.
Thank you.
No, I support this.
Yeah, the thing I I think I'd like to mention is wherever possible, I think we want to make applications for anything in the town streamlined and realistic and simple as possible. A lot of times, things go to the zoning officer. They get referred to the zoning board and immediately come back to the planning board. This is not only costly in terms of time, but it's expensive. It's another month perhaps of engineers or lawyer or things like that. So I I really think we're on the right track here and doing the right thing to move move things that require a little less scrutiny to the forefront for yes or no.
Thank you, Art. Other comments?
No.
I I would also add that one of the reasons that the first bullet item is there is to avoid a possible appearance of conflict of interest. Because the the way it is now, the zoning official makes a decision and then goes to the planning board and then it goes back to the zoning board with the building official to rule on it. So there's, it avoids that potential appearance of conflict of interest.
Paul, this is John Schumow. I have a question on the third item.
Go ahead.
Screening of rooftop equipment such as HVAC and such, I realize existing or proposed would be required for any building where a building permit for exterior alterations is requested. Could you just explain that a little bit more to me, please? Somebody comes up, they want to do some alterations on an existing building. They have an unscreened rooftop. They're going to be asked to screen that before approve any other options.
Well, if they would, if they came in with a request for waiver on the materials they were using to redo the facade, they would not have to address screening the rooftop equipment. Because all we would be asked to do is address the waiver.
Thank you.
What this does is allows us to make sure that equipment is screened.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from the board?
Like Bill had his hand up.
I was asking if you want to, looking for a motion. I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chairman. My only comment is that I I would like to have the opportunity to take a quick spin through this. And one of the things that is required when we're doing anything like this for development plan review is that you know, there'd be objective standards of review that are included, which would be to tie in the commercial design standard. So my suggestion would be maybe to continue this to the next meeting. Allow me to get any comments back to Ron and Rita. And then at that point, you'd have the opportunity to vote on it and ford it on to the town council for consideration.
Do that by the next regular meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get Peter's solicitor's review as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
That can be done by the next meeting, Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's, I mean, it's it's, this is not a, this is not a, an in depth revision that you're you're doing, but I just want to make sure we button it up and and meet the standards under the state law, so.
Okay, very good. We have a
I got one more, one more, just to be a troublemaker. I I think we saw something we weren't supposed to see last week when we went out to the Y. What's sitting on the existing buildings of these two monstrous air conditioning or air treatment systems? And they are sitting up there. Pardon my term, bare ass naked without any screening. So maybe we can fix that in a simpler way than a cumbersome process, so.
We can, we can take care of that on the floor. Other comments from members of the board?
Question, Ron and and or Peter, if this, assuming we come back and we we were, we move to support this after a peach review, this goes to the council and they and they for a zone zoning ordinance amendment, and then ultimately, we're going to see it back again, right, as a public hearing? Is that what happens? They send it to us?
No, the public hearings at the council level. So once, once you send your recommendation forward to the council, they have the hearing and they adopt it or or not. Yeah.
Okay, understood.
Okay, may I have a motion to continue this to the next regular meeting?
So moved.
Second, Art Weber.
Motion by BJ, second by Art. Any discussions? Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
I vote aye. This item is continued to the next regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is item six A. Request of the zoning board of review for an advisory recommendation on the petition of Thomas and Ella Alkenclaus for special use permit to allow in addition to an existing residential dwelling located in zone one of the watershed protection district property. Property located at two thirty three beach road at one twenty five lot one forty nine. Mr. Martland, are you the attorney?
I am, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Martland, representing the Alkenclauses. This this matter before the board has the chairman has just read into the the record is a request for an advisory opinion and recommendation relative to building in zone one of the watershed protection district. There's an existing single family house where there are really two dwelling units located on this property. There's a dwelling unit located in the existing garage, and then there's the main house that is the single family residence. Properties located at two thirty three Third Beach Road. So if you're heading, I guess, in the south easterly direction toward Third Beach, just after you pass Green End Avenue, this property is is located on the on the right hand side. It's got Paradise Brook that runs across the front of the property and the house is set back on a knoll located in the in the middle of the property. The it's a, I I don't know offhand how old the the home is. It's it's an older colonial home, historic in nature. It's got a small footprint and, you know, very small kitchen. And the the Alkenclauses are looking to provide a a single level addition, kitchen addition. It's about two hundred and eighty square feet just to provide some additional space in there. Because of the proximity of Paradise Brook, the the this is located within zone one of the watershed protection district and as such requires a special use permit before any construction can be done. Other than the the footprint that's being added, there aren't any other improvements being made. The site is already, already has septic which is located really in the south westerly portion of the site. It's pretty, very modest proposal. I've got Lynn Small with me tonight to answer any questions that the board might have regarding the proposal. And I unless you want to And unless you want a, a more lengthy presentation, I would sort of leave it at that. I don't, yeah, the, it's, it's still located at a significant diff, distance from, from the Brook. We're maintaining the existing drainage patterns. I don't believe that it's going to impact in any detrimental fashion of the surrounding area.
Comments from the planning board? Questions for the engineer?
Yeah, I've got a question.
I got one.
Art, you were first.
I don't think I'm equipped to make an analysis of this particular idea without having a professional opinion, perhaps from the town engineer. I know in cases like this before in Water Protection District 1, we had a checklist that we normally went out and did a site visit. But I, I, I actually need, I think the town engineer should be the guy to tell us this is good to go and not just us trying to figure it out.
So, Art and Mr. Chairman, the town engineer, Warren Hall, walked us through his analysis of this application last night. And as the planning board member of the Conservation Commission, I'm having a deja vu. We went through this in detail with Lynn last night. The town engineer's assessment of it was, has been highlighted by Dave Martland. It's, it's extremely minimal. There's no de minimis impact to the surrounding wetland or the area based on the small, small scale addition that's proposed here. I, I think it would be helpful for Lynn to give a bit of an overview for, you know, because obviously, everybody else wasn't part of that presentation last night. But I can, as your representative, Art, I can tell you that we went through this in detail and, and it was voted on unanimously last night.
Okay, I, I, I think that's good. Just, I would like to have a written opinion from, not only the Conservation Commission, but from the town engineer.
From the Conservation Commission, perhaps Warren could write a letter on his opinion.
We, we have a correspondence from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Touches on, it doesn't address any concerns, but it, it's minimal. It's pretty much says what Dave and Joe have said, and I'm sure Lynn will say as well.
Other comments from members of the planning board?
No, seems pretty much upfront.
I, I just have a simple question. Where the, where the new kitchen addition is, is, is there a pathway that leads around to the back door? It says, it seems like there's very little space on the west side of that kitchen. Lynn, could you answer that question?
It does show a proposed paver.
If you look at the single-family residence, where it says stone patio, I know there's, that's the back door entrance. And my question is, how do they, how do people get to the back door now?
Yeah, there is, right on this plan, if you're looking at the screen, it says that there's a proposed path that will go around the back.
It's, it's very, very narrow along the west side. Is that correct?
Well, it's close to the house.
No, I don't think so, Paul. I think you, those blocks are the pavers. And it's spelled out. So there's plenty of room there. It looks like there's more than enough for a walk, walkway.
What, what are those circles?
These little squares that, those are the path pavers.
Oh, okay, all right.
Not the wall. I think you might be thinking of retaining the wall.
Yeah, it's not a wall.
I got it.
The proposed stone wall is identified to the right of the pavement.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I got it now.
You have the last petition on your mind with the big retaining wall.
Any other comments from members of the planning board?
Looks like it will be nice.
Supportive.
Very nice.
Okay, may I have a motion for a positive recommendation to the zoning board of review for a special use permit to allow this addition?
And just before you vote, I did include some suggested conditions of approval, which you can choose to apply or not.
As noted.
All right.
Okay, so Bill said as noted, so the motion includes those conditions. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
For the planner, is one of your conditions a sign-off from the town engineer?
No.
Yes or no?
No, no, there's, that's not in the memo that I sent.
Do you want?
If the board wants to add a condition, you can do that.
I, I would support this on, on having that condition fulfilled.
Bill Nash made the motion. Do you modify your motion to include that condition?
As long as it's not going to delay the process anymore. I mean, frankly, I think, you know, we, I'm satisfied with what Joe represented. I'm satisfied with his memo. But if, if it's going to make Art happy, then I'm glad to amend my motion.
May, may I be heard on that?
Sure.
Yeah, I, when, when we talk about having the town engineer sign off on it, I'm just, I'm not certain in, in, in what respect. You know, I know that Warren would potentially be involved in reviewing the soil and sedimentation plan at the, in connection with the building permit process. But, yeah, I'm, I'm not certain of the standard as to, you know, what he's signing off on other than what he did with the Conservation Commission.
Well, I think what he should sign off on are the three paragraphs in the first, the following development design standards are required by the zoning ordinance, 1108. I mean, somebody's got to guarantee that that's, those are being met. Everything here that's a standard is certainly not for layman, but.
Point of order, I'm, I will not modify my amendment. I'll just let it stand. Let it stand as is, please. And I, I just, I just think, going back to the engineer, at, at a cost, based on what was represented by not only Joe, but Dave, and I'm sure Lynn will testify the same way, I'm satisfied with the motion as it stands.
That the condition, the, the first condition of the recommended conditions in my memo indicates the requirement to comply with chapters 153 and 151 regarding stormwater management and erosion control. That gets, as Dave just mentioned, that gets reviewed at building permit stage by the town engineer. So I think, Art, that's probably covered.
I think so, Art, yeah.
All right, that's fine.
I think so, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I just saw him afterwards to make sure we close that loop.
I understand.
Okay, we have a motion in, in front of us. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Perrick?
Aye.
Mr. Schumow?
Aye.
Mrs. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye, and I'm happy.
Thank you, Art.
Aye.
Mr. Nash? I vote aye. The, the motion passes. And I would like to request a five-minute recess so I can take care of my dog.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Five minutes, five-minute recess, please.
That's a good idea. I'll do mine, too.
Five minutes works for me.
Am I muted? Ah, okay, I think.
I can hear you, BJ. You're good. But you just muted, you just muted yourself. You're muted, BJ.
Is it okay?
There you go, yep.
Oh, I'll try not to touch anything, so it's okay. Thank you.
Yep. Well, I, I muted everybody at the start of the recess just to avoid any extreme conversation getting recorded.
Is everyone back?
Some of us are back.
I may have to depart briefly again, let my dog in, but.
Yep. We're waiting for John. I don't know if Bill, Bill is back. There's John.
John.
I'm back.
And here's Bill.
Okay, the meeting is back in order. Next item on the agenda is item 6B. Request of Attorney Scott T. Spear, on behalf of the Elegy Trust, owner of Lot 2 in the Kent Dune Conservation Subdivision, 561 Indian Avenue, Tax Assessor's Plat 129, Lot 301, to amend the grant of cross easements and declaration of protective covenants for the, for the subdivision to terminate the well and water line easement benefit, benefiting subdivision lots 1, 3, and 4.
So Mr. Spear is not on, I know that, but I believe one of the property owners is on. I'll just briefly introduce it for you. The, the request of the property owner of Lot 2, which has been agreed to by the owners of the three other properties. There's four lots total in this situation. All have agreed to extinguish a cross easement that allows for lots 1, 3, and 4 to access water through a well on Lot 2. And what I understand is that a well has now, or a water somehow has been provided to each of the three other lots, making the easement to lot, the well on Lot 2 unnecessary. Mike, if you will, Mike Warburg is on, one of the property owners. If you'd like to go ahead and embellish on what I just said, feel free.
No, you did, you did very, very well. Thank you. Thank you for, for, for hearing this matter. In essence, there used to be one well that fed lots 2, 3, and 4. And in the process of selling the property, we figured out that it was best for each, each house to have its own well. So Lot 1 is actually not connected to the well. It's just lots 2, 3, and 4. So 3 and 4 both dug their own wells. So as a result, each of Lot 2, 3, and 4 have wells. And at this point, there's no need for 3 and 4 to have access to well of Lot 2. So we just want to make that formal. Each house has its own well and no, no cross easements. I don't know if that helps.
Yep, and the, the interesting thing is, this might not normally come to the planning board. It's just that in this situation, for whatever reason, the, the covenants state that they cannot be changed without the planning board's approval. Peter, you might want to just touch on that.
Yeah, Ron is, Ron is correct on that. This is something that would typically.
Barely hear you, Peter.
This is, is that better? Yeah, this is something that would typically be done at a staff level. But the, as Ron said, the, the document that they want to change has specific language in it that says it can't be changed without the approval of the planning board. So that's why I suggest that it be put on the agenda tonight. But it is, it, it is something that otherwise would, would normally just be between the property owners themselves since it doesn't actually impact the conservation easement that governs the open space.
Motion to approve?
Before you, before you do that, Bill, what is the action the planning board is taking in this matter? Are we simply recommending that we terminate the well and water line easement?
You, you're simply approving the requested change to the covenants.
Okay, thank you. Your motion, Bill?
Motion to approve.
That can.
I have a motion by Bill, second by BJ. Is there any discussion? Mr. Perrick? Are you muted?
Joe's muted.
Mr. Perrick?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Schumow?
Aye.
Mrs. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Art's what muted, too.
You're muted, Art?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Fenton?
Muted, too. Everyone's muted tonight.
Well, I muted everybody at the beginning of the break.
Mike, you got to get up and unmute yourself again.
Mike, are you there?
He's, he's, he's getting to it.
Give us a thumbs up.
I can't even see him.
Go like this.
Mike?
There he is.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did that to you, Mike.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We approve the request.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item 6D. Public hearing. Application of Wiley LLC, care of Ellery Yahia, for preliminary plan approval of a three-lot subdivision of land, property located at the intersection of Peckham Avenue and Volklus Avenue, and identified as 206 Peckham Avenue, Tax Assessor's Plat 128, Lot 31. Is there someone here for this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jay Lynch, on behalf of the applicant.
Go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
We're here this evening for a preliminary plan approval, for a three lot subdivision. I also have Lynn Small, who is the engineer on this project, who will be providing testimony this evening. We were in front of you a while ago.
Mr Chairman, hang on a minute. Yes, it, it's a public hearing, I think we didn't open it.
Oh, thank you, thank you, may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by BJ, second by Art. So open the public hearing, any discussion? Mr Pirik?
Aye.
Mr Chumo?
Aye.
Mrs Owen?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mr Fenton?
Aye.
Mr Nash?
Aye.
I vote aye, the public hearing is open, thank you. Mr Lynch, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. The matter before you is on for preliminary plan approval for a three lot subdivision. We are seeking waivers from the road construction requirements of the regulations. What we're proposing is rather than a roadway, we're creating a shared driveway. That's going to be a pervious roadway servicing the, uh. The three lots. Front lot, and then the two rear lots. Just to give you a little bit of background on this site, it currently has two separate dwelling units on it. The main house is located adjacent to Peckham Avenue. Towards the rear of the property, there is a detached garage that has two dwelling units in it. If the board approves this plan, the detached structure will be demolished. The garage that's servicing the property will be relocated onto the, the existing house lot. So in addition to the waivers that we're seeking for the road maintenance. We're also requesting a waiver of a previous condition that this board put on at the, the master plan stage. When we were in front of you for the master plan approval. You had, this board had requested that we provide a sidewalk on the. I guess west side of the, the roadway. The, my client would ask for a waiver of that required or removal of that condition. Just to permit grass access on the west side to get to the rear of the, the subject properties. I know she has had this discussion with several of the neighbors in the area. And they'd rather not see a sidewalk along this driveway. But, you know, we'll leave that to you, that's one thing we're going to be asking for. Removal of that prior condition that was imposed at the master plan stage. Lynn, if you're there, if you want to walk through the technical aspect of this plan, please.
I'm here, I just unmuted myself successfully. Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, Sixth Valley Road. Last night, we presented this project in front of the Conservation Commission for their recommendation. We're not in any stinging or hydroic soils, and we don't have wetlands in the area, nor are we in the watershed protection district. But as a major in development, we solicited their opinion to provide to you. I don't know if you have that information, but they did give us a favorable recommendation. As Jay had explained, we're not asking for any increase in density. Where we have three residential units on the site now, and we're going to have three residential lots on the site when we're done. We're just asking for three single family homes. We have a shared driveway provided, which is at the planned north side of the site. Which lines up with Volklus Ave. For this project, since it's going to be maintained by the homeowners association. We were able to make a pervious shared driveway. So we weren't required to have the full blown paved access, which allows us a greener. Type of development, which the driveway is its drainage system. This was very well received by the Conservation Commission, because their main goal is to reduce the impervious surfaces. It's going to be 20 feet wide, and we'll provide suitable turnarounds at each resident for the fire department. And all those driveways will be pervious as well. We developed the site plans so that we were providing drainage provisions, which you see. In these rectangular areas that are at the far rear of the site, it's a dashed. I know you can't see my, my cursor. But for Lot 3, yes, I think, I don't know, it's at the back of the lots. Those are the drainage areas, they're underground, we allocated 4,500 square feet of impervious area. So that makes for a very large house, because that's one story of 4,500 square feet. Usually, in my experience, we don't see houses bigger than that around here for single family homes. Obviously, that they exist bigger than that. But most of the times you see them bigger than that when you're in the coastal areas and like that, but regular single family lots, you don't see houses. Too much bigger than that. These three lots will all be serviced by septic systems and private wells. We have those wells located so that they maintain the requirement separation from existing septic system cesspools. On other sites and our own site. We do have elevated water tables, and we've taken that into account, we're expecting. Advanced pretreatment septic systems with sand filters, those are all shown on the plan. This project went through RIDM and was approved with subdivision suitability. So the state during this subdivision suitability review primarily focuses on your wells. On the site and adjacent properties, and then the septic systems on your site and adjacent properties, to make sure that you're not. Impeding on anyone else's. Well, or septic with your proposed conditions. Each lot would be subject to an individual septic approval prior to construction, just like they would be subject to an individual soil erosion sentiment control. Plan review through the building permit office at the town level. Um, I think that basically runs through everything. We do have a grass pass side of the roadway, but we not proposing any sidewalk in that area. Right now, we do have underground electric alongside the, the shared driveway, but other than that, there's no. Utility, because everything is privately owned. We did take into account all of the neighbors' concerns, we pulled the drainage features. Further into the lots on Lot 2. As that a budding neighbor was concerned if we got too close to their property. For Lot 3, we made sure that we did not fill in the depression that exists on that lot, which would potentially force any. Existing puddled stormwater to go into the neighbor's property as well. So we took all of those things into account, we do show the existing tray, and we're hoping we can save that during construction, but it will depend on its root structure. And on this plan, we do show the relocated garage for Lot 1. I don't know if you have any other questions? Um, Mr Chairman, I think this went before the tree commission, and I think the tree commission. Was favorably disposed to everything they saw.
Thank you. Other comments from members of the planning board? Bill?
I do, thank you. So, this, this goes back to, I mean, obviously February of this year, which was. As I get older, my mind is drifting from what happened back in February, let alone March or last week. And, and we, I know you, Jay, you touched on the conditions of the master plan, Ron, I just asked for future reference. Having the master plan decision in front of us would be helpful, because I, what I prefer to do is look at the conditions, because. Specifically, Jay touched on. The sidewalk, which I know we talked about quite a bit, and as mentioned in your memo. The circular driveway or the circular turnaround for the rescue vehicles or just general ease of access. That's, that's a distance off the road, I still maintain, is a distance off the road, and I see you have a condition in there. Recommended condition, the driveway design review and approve by the fire chief prior to final plan approval, so. You've covered bases all around, but I think just to re-circle back what I'm asking, one. A future reference, having the master plan in front of us at a preliminary plan approval. And in this case, you know, I generally support this, only two lots. It seems like the neighbor, I'll wait till the neighbor speaks if, if at all. But it is moved far enough away, I still prefer sidewalks and curbing frankly, frankly. But for a lot like this, I'm, I'm generally supportive of waivers. And the same goes for the circular driveway, as long as it can be signed off on by the, by the fire chief. That's all, thank you.
Other comments, members of the board? Any member of the public who would like to comment? Can you see anyone, Ron?
If there's any members of the public, feel free to unmute yourself, looks like Molly Dickinson has her hand up, go ahead Molly.
Yeah. Um, the, the neighbors have been very good.
Could you just introduce yourself, please? Name and address.
I work at 192 Peckham Avenue.
Go ahead.
The neighbors have been. Very forthright and very outgoing to make sure that our concerns have been addressed. Very, very.
Jay, I'm having a hard time hearing, if you could maybe get closer to your mic.
How's that?
Better.
Would you repeat it, please?
Okay, I'll repeat it, the, the neighbors at 206 have been very forthright and very diligent to. Make sure that everything, all of our concerns have been addressed, and we do appreciate that, so you probably don't hear this too often in these, in these meetings, but. We feel that neighbors talking to neighbors works a lot better than. Long drawn out things, we've met at their dinner table, they've met us over here, and we really appreciate that. With that said, our heart is, we don't really. See the need to have a sidewalk going along the side of our property. So personally, I think a grass, grass walkway would be plenty fine by us.
If it can be maintained as a grass, grassy area with clear sightlines and, you know, clear walking, clear mode. We think that's actually better than a sidewalk that's hardscaped.
Thank you.
Could I just comment, Mr Chair, on that? The plan shows, I support that, thank you for saying that. Butters, I appreciate hearing that from you. The plan does show a grass seed access path with stepping stones, maybe Lynn, could you explain what it's, what that is? I know there's probably a detail somewhere, but.
So when we were with the permitting with the state, we had to accommodate any impervious areas in our drainage designs when we ran our calculations, and we wanted to make sure. If the board wasn't willing to allow us to do just a grass path area along the side of the. Shared driveway, then we had provisions in place, so we wouldn't have to go back to the state to add impervious areas. So when we modeled the drainage system, we modeled it with some stepping stones going along that area. In hopes that if the board wouldn't agree with just a grass path and keeping it clear open, which would be less maintenance and more likely to be. Kept in a very nice condition, that we could fall back on stepping stone idea where it would. Was the next best thing, in our opinion. We do still want the board to, to allow us to do just the clear grass area, but. So what that means is your drainage systems have just a little bit extra space in them. If we don't have to put those in.
How big are the stepping stones, Lynn?
They're not that big, it would just be like those granite, those slate bluestone pieces, but we wanted to lock it in, so we didn't end up back at the state. You know, with another timeline issue.
So I.
Overdesign than underdesign at that point.
I guess I would support that, as long as there's, it's addressed, Ron, in the conditions that. That I, I think the butters mentioned it being clear cut. Or, or at least being maintained as a walking surface, is that addressed in, in the conditions, Ron?
I don't think so, you can certainly add that.
Yeah, but that would make, that would be better, I'd, I'd be okay to do away with the, with the sidewalk. And the paint and the stepping stones, as long as it's maintained as a walkable surface, however else, whatever way that can be enforced, I don't know, but.
Right.
At least there's language that does that, and it gives me a better feeling of people that may want to walk back there, and. And it's not a private road, it's a, you know, it's a public right of way, and people have the right to walk back there, not that anybody would, but. You know.
Yep, so that would be a sixth condition, that the grassed walk, excuse me, walkway be maintained as a walkable surface.
Tough to enforce, but.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, Mr Chairman, let me weigh in a little bit here. So last, last night, you know, we had our Conservation Commission hearing, and this was a, an item on the agenda. Lynn walked us through what she just described last night for the Conservation Commission. You know, going back to February or March or whenever it was, Bill, when we reviewed this at master plan level. But the overriding issue here with this site is the high water table, is that correct, Lynn?
I mean, we did have to design the site around the water table.
Right, so our focus on the Conservation Commission last night was trying to. Enhance and increase the amount of pervious surface versus impervious. And I know, we, we talked about one of the conditions at master plan, having a sidewalk. You basically, and you know, back in the, back at that time, if you guys recall, there were going to be more homes on this. Potential subdivision than what was, what's ultimately been agreed to. But, um. You know, you, you basically have lots 2 and 3 in the back, and really, it's, it's really one lot. Having a sidewalk or some sort of a walkable pathway. You know, to us just seem, you know, I don't want to have a sideways down my driveway, which is essentially what we're asking for here. So I think, you know, Bill, you've got a good compromise, and, and just. For us to have the maximize the amount of pervious surface on this site, I think is really the critical issue. So that's what we focused on last night, and we gave it a unanimous approval to bring it to the planning board.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, so were there, were there three houses proposed here at one time? See, I've even forgotten that.
The, the original master plan submission, so by density, this project allows for. Yeah, so we did reduce the density at some point, I don't, I think the master plan was for three eventually, though.
I think the first master plan was a four lot subdivision, then we amended that down to a three lot subdivision.
So what was the fight, again, that's why having the master plan in front of us might be helpful, was it three or was it two?
Who was it? It was a three lot, three lot subdivision.
So you've.
We started with four, we went to three.
All right, see, all right, I would have recalled that, okay, very well, thank, thank you for explaining that, Joey, appreciate it.
There anyone else in the public who would like to speak?
I don't see anybody.
Don't see anyone, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made.
BJ, will you second?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion? Mr Pirik?
Aye.
Mr Chumo?
Aye.
Mrs Owen?
Aye.
Mr Weber?
Aye.
Mr Fenton?
Aye.
Mr Nash?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve the preliminary plan?
This would be subject to the.
Yeah, Ron, if you could maybe lay it out for us, because there's, there's a bunch going on there.
Yep, so there's the five conditions contained in the memo, four recommended by the TRC. Number five is is regarding the driveway that Bill talked about, having the fire chief approve the driveway design prior to final plan approval. And then we just added a sixth condition, which would be a requirement that the grassed walkway area be maintained as a walkable surface.
Without the stepping stones.
With, I can add that without stepping stones. And then the waiver that's being requested. Again, we would normally, not normally, but typically we would. Have the waivers addressed at the master plan stage, but that wasn't done in this case. So the waiver. For the construction of the town standard road, that's being requested at this time, too. And then finally, the five required findings of fact.
Don't move.
Thank you. Second. Is there a second?
Second, but art.
Motion is made by Bill, seconded by Art. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pyrick.
Hi.
Mr. Chumo.
Hi.
Mrs. Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Weber.
Hi.
Mr. Fenton.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you.
Night.
The next item on the agenda is item.
And this drop much juice.
Yeah.
Drop much juice. Only other thing you can do is do it on your iPhone.
Somebody has to mute their mic. I'm hearing.
Yes, I just muted, muted, John.
Thank you. Item 6F, a request of the town council for an advisory recommendation. On a petition of Landings Capital and Development LLC. To change the zoning district designation of property at 438 East Main Road, Platte 113, Lot 13. From office business traffic sensitive. OBA to limited business traffic sensitive LBA.
So Attorney Hayes is on, as is Chris Bisho. So one of them can.
So Ron, Patrick Hayes, Corcoran Peckham Hayes, Lee's and Oleneck. For Irongate Properties, the property owner and Landings Capital and Development, the proposed owner of this property. We're seeing, we're requesting zoning change for the property at the corner of East Main Road and Forest Avenue. That would permit the property to be changed to limited business. And would, this would allow the developer to come back before you for a proposed mixed use development at that property. To revitalize it. Chris Bisho. Is, is the principal of Landings Capital and he can speak to the specifics of the development.
Hi, Chris Bisho from Landings Capital and Development. Thank you very much, Pat. Thank you, board, for taking some time. We are requesting the zoning change. Because upon purchase, we plan on renovating the current. Office building, which is 80% vacant. Maintaining looking upwards, who is the primary tenant in their current space. And then following that up with a request to the planning board. For the addition of 12 multifamily two-bedroom units. Rental units. On the property through the special permit process, special use permit process. The purchase of this property, I think, really allows. An enhancement of the area. We've seen a lot of development with Plummy's. The new Neon gas station. And Irongate itself is kind of laggard there on the corner of Forest Ave and East Main Road. We plan on investing over three quarters of a million dollars into the property initially. Improving landscaping, facades and giving the office complex. Even though more professional office complex, a much more prominent identification and place around the area. I think revitalizing it, bringing some professional businesses, that area is really going to enhance. Places like Plummy's and the center where the pickpockets is located, the Neon. And really get those offices occupied, even though we're in the area COVID. We're being entrepreneurial and very optimistic that the world will come back and. You know, some people don't want to work in their house. They do want a place to go. So that, that's our ultimate redevelopment plan. The first step is to move it to the LB zone. In order to take advantage of the mixed use ordinance the town has in place.
Comments? Patrick Hayes, I just want to add, the LB zone is actually across the street, so this is really extending it. Onto this property. It's not unique just to this particular piece.
And in your packet, I provided you with two maps, one showing the. Current zoning situation in the area, including this property in the surrounding area. And I also provided a map showing the comprehensive plan designation for that same area. The comprehensive plan designation for this property, and if you have the map in front of you, it's shaded in blue, I guess. Is limited in office business. Which allows, according to the comp plan zoning of either, it can be so into the limited business or office business. And still, excuse me, and still be consistent with the comprehensive plan designation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question from Mr. Bisho. There are going to be some opportunities coming up in other parts of town where mixed use development might be. Instituteed, particularly in the West Main corridor, and there's an opportunity there perhaps to look at affordable housing. Have you given any consideration if you get a mixed use system going there of using some of those residential units? To classify as affordable housing?
Yes, you know, typically, you know, we will do affordable housing, Art. Obviously, you know, we only get have 12 units available based off the land. Available based off the square footage allowed for two-bedroom units. You know, I think we can work together in the planning board and of course, we'd like to see some. You know, as you know, based off our landings development, we're really a workforce housing property owner. And I believe, you know, in that mission. And again, this. Opportunity presents the same type of use in Middletown. And perhaps we can work with the planning board and there's an opportunity for us to maybe add a unit or two to compensate us for providing some affordable units. Oh, it's the right thing to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other comments, members of the planning board?
Yes, I would, I would like to say that I think that it's a wonderful idea and I want to thank Chris very much. For his concepts of it, particularly for affordable housing, even maybe senior housing. Because it's on a bus route, there's restaurants in the area. It's within walking distance to Town Hall. It has a lot of potential. So I, I think it's wonderful. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you very much, BJ.
Thank you, BJ. Other comments?
Question, Paul.
I have a.
Bill Nash.
Thank you. Two questions. One, is this the property that, I know what property is, but is this the one, did we have a petition recently for?
Yeah.
Development plan review for siding.
It was a waiver request to allow for final siding.
That building, right? So the other question is, is, I know, I know, I supported. For that respect, but you mentioned how many units that you're looking to come in and propose for and. And is it going to be within the existing building or is it going to, are we looking at redeveloping and adding buildings?
That's a good question, Bill. So, so there is 91,000 square feet of land on that location. It's a little over two acres. We will be adding an additional building. So we're going to be renovating the current office space, which sits vacant because it's outdated. So we're bringing in some high, high bandwidth communication T1 with Cox into the current office building. Renovating all those offices to attract, you know, professional businesses. We'll be coming to the planning board for a special use permit. To add an additional building for 12 multifamily units.
Thank you. And development plan review will be included there, I'm assuming, Ron, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, if this goes forward quickly, it will be our first mixed use development under the new mixed use ordinance. So it would be. A review that would be conducted by the planning board, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments, planning board members? Well, you asked my question, Bill, on that last one, so thank you for doing that.
So this is a petition that's been presented to the town council. The town council has forwarded it to the planning board for a recommendation, so. The action being requested is a recommendation to the town council on the petition to change the zoning.
Yeah. So may I have a motion for a favorable recommendation to the town council for this zoning change?
I'll make that motion.
It is made by Art. Who seconded it?
John Chumo.
Oh, John, whatever.
John Chumo, seconded motion. Any discussion? Mr. Pyrick.
Hi.
Mr. Chumo.
Hi.
Mrs. Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Weber.
Hi.
Mr. Fenton.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with that, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. The next item on the agenda is item 6G. Discussion of potential traffic and other modifications in the Atlantic Beach District. Ideas presented by planning board member, Mr. Pyrick. Joe, the floor is yours.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and. Again, you know, not to be long-winded because we've been here for a while, but I think. Our work with the Atlantic, Atlantic Beach Club District really presents us with a kind of a compelling opportunity to try to maximize. What we can do down there and, you know, my ideas are just very. Kind of at an infant stage, but I, my recommendations are, I think, if we could look a little bit critically at that area, look at traffic patterns. I mean. You know, I pity those poor restaurants as the weather turns. Because not many people are going to be eating on the, on the sidewalk and in the parking lots come December and January. But I think, notwithstanding some of the conditions that have been imposed on us. I think there's some, some really great things we can do down there. We've taken the steps in looking at that whole district and. Coming up with regulations and guidelines to help us. Kind of enhance the development of it. So. You know, my ideas again are just, some of them are good, some of them really need to be tweaked. I understand that, but just trying to take that maybe a little bit to the next step is what I was trying to accomplish with my. My ideas, Paul, to you and to others.
Yeah, the, the most drastic idea is to change the traffic flow by making.
And I'm not a traffic engineer and I know there's a lot of challenges to that.
Yeah, well, I'm wondering, I'd like to ask, Ron, is it worth getting a consultant to? Look at this and evaluate the feasibility of this.
We might even just start in-house with our own town engineer and the public works director to get their input first and. See where that goes and if we, we have been using. Par Corporation, I believe, to do a lot of our traffic safety evaluation. So. Depending on the advice we get from the town's engineer and DPW director, we may, or they may want to bring par into the, into the discussion.
And would they be able to do this before our next meeting?
Oh, no, no. I would expect that this, this conversation would happen, you know, maybe over the next couple of months. You may, you may or may not have heard, it's relatively new news that Tomma Lachlan will be leaving us, so. Will be without a public works director for at least a short period of time. I can at least get started in a discussion with Warren Hall.
Paul, can I ask? So. First off, Joe, I, I, I support your, 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 your ideas. I think what, you know, I live down here as, as you know, and I know many of us frequent it. I'll eat outside, though, all day, all year long, if it means eating at my favorite restaurant.
Same here.
But um. Much, I mean, obviously, this is a hot button spot in town. There are approvals already in place for certain plans to happen. The DOT, the, you know, the roundabouts discussion, the. Improvements, the more recently, the discussion on the TIF and underground utilities. So Ron, in kind of, I don't want to drag this out too long, but in a nutshell, if you could, what's already approved and how much leeway do we have now to go back and suggest stuff like this?
Well. What's, what's been constructed down there? Already is, is what's been approved. So anything going forward, I wouldn't say has been approved. There's been lots of conversation and initial design work on the Streetscapes project. The undergrounding of utilities, that's, that's another issue where the funding and the cost of that projects will, I think, dictate what happens with that. But, you know, at least in those two examples, there's nothing that's been per se approved. But there has been some work done towards initial, initial design. So it's the, you know, in terms of things that have been done, the things that the state has spent money on, it's the intersections that have already been constructed. You know, it would be, I guess, a challenge to argue that we want to. You know, make changes to those intersections or something else that would impact something that was just done.
Like a Quinac Ave Valley Roundabout, and then I know the narrowing of the road. Much of that comes into play because I think, you know, we, over the, over time, we were involved in various degrees. Some of us weren't even on the board. When many of these things were talked about and proposed and approved way back when. But I know that like the roundabout, I know the work that's done, you know, the teardrop, that's done. But there's some work that was supposed to be done at, you know, the intersection of Newport Avenue and then Valley Road with the roundabout. That's going to still happen, correct?
So the roundabout has been, it was shifted from the project that included the intersections that have already been completed. It was shifted to what I call the, the North Aquinic Avenue Project, which is the reconstruction and sidewalk work on Aquinic Avenue, north of Green End Avenue. So that the roundabout has been lumped in with that. So that, that is going forward. Newport Avenue has, has not yet. You know, moved forward, so that's still in play.
Oh, so that's not a, that configuration is not approved?
It's not, it's not funded as part of a, an ongoing project.
It's not funded, but it's approved.
Well. I would say the fact that it's not part of a funded project means that it still could be modified.
Yeah.
Whereas, whereas the roundabout is part of a funded project, it's, it's, you know, you know, in the, in the works, in the pipeline.
Which sounds like it might include then the narrowing of the roadway, which, which I have concerns on. But that sounds like that's not funded yet either, so it's open up fair game, just like, just like the intersection. Does that sound right?
You mean the Streetscapes project where we're going to widen the sidewalks? Right.
Widen the sidewalks, shrink the road.
So that, that, all that's been done on that so far is preliminary conceptual design, right?
So there's room then for these ideas to be out there and viable. So I, you know, I applaud you, Joe, for. For putting us out there, you know, this is what we do and I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to working on it.
So Bill, here's what I would propose, you know, in the essence of time to everybody is, number one. I think the COVID situation has accelerated kind of my view on. The necessity of, you know, expanding outside seating areas, for example. You've got restaurants down there that are really hard pressed. With one or two tables and they could do a lot more business if they had an expanded area. Number two. I'm a realist in terms of what can be accomplished, given economics, given timeframes, given everyone's busy schedule. But I would throw it to Ron and say. You know, I would volunteer my time to sit with the town engineer to try to advance. Some of the ideas that I have with him to see and to report back to the board. On what might be feasible, you know, rather than going from zero to 60 miles an hour, you know, we go zero to 15 and then to 30. Incrementally. So I, you know, I'd be willing to spend some time to sit with Warren, whoever. And try to come up with some, some sharing of ideas. So it's not just some. You know, concept that never gets any traction, but it's, it's realistic steps that we could take incrementally over time. but it's, it's realistic steps that we could take incrementally over time.
That is. With all the members of the board?
Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's Art. Yeah, I, I support Joe's idea, and I think we've got plenty of time to get things done. Because the town council has not actually looked at the master beach, the Atlantic Beach Master Plan, either in terms of concept recently or the use tables we worked on. So I think there's time to get your little study done and add it to the new council. Because this council's not going to even see it, so that whoever's elected will get a chance to see it. I think, I think your thoughts are excellent and can be folded in if it needs approval with, with the other people.
Other comments from members of the board? Is this okay, taking, letting Joe take the lead on this?
I think he'd be very good.
Yeah.
I support that, too. Do we need to take a formal action, Ron, or can we just give this assignment to Joe?
I think by consensus, you can, you can turn Joe loose on it.
Thank you.
Take it and run with it, Joe.
All right.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, one thing we need to do for Joe is buy him an orange vest. Maybe a bullseye, too, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item five G. Review and provide recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to the Middletown zoning ordinance to regulate the installation and use of outdoor lighting per comprehensive plan action item N-V-C1. Ron, do you want to take the lead on introducing this?
Sure. So this goes back to, again, earlier discussion about trying to beef up our regulations regarding control of outdoor lighting and particularly dark sky, requiring dark sky compliant lighting and promoting energy efficiency and, and the character, visual character of the town. So what I've presented to you in the memo is, again, it's an early draft for discussion purposes of what would be a new article in the zoning ordinance regarding outdoor lighting. The, the idea, again, the idea is to promote limiting lighting to that, which is necessary. Trying to reduce glare, reduce light pollution. I think it, you know, as we did with the earlier item on the agenda, I don't know that Peter's had a chance to review this. Or, I mean, we can certainly go through it if the board has any comments, too, at this point. But I think if, if there's no particular issues that you wish to discuss as a board tonight, it might be appropriate to ask Peter to, to take a run through it, just to make sure we don't go too far before we get our hands slapped.
I wasn't, I did review it. I wasn't planning on slapping anybody's hands. I thought it's, it's fine. It's, it's really more just a question from a substantive point of what the board wants to include and not include in terms of requirements, but otherwise, I thought it was fine.
I did, I, I had a kind of a general question in, in several places in this. It talks about how the glare should not exceed a certain amount or lighting shouldn't be, exceed a certain amount on neighboring property. How do, how do you, how do you do that? How do you assure that?
Well, in the case of a development application, in this, this often happens already where a developer will supply a lighting plan where the photometrics have been done, which identify, you know, through engineering practices, what the expected light outfall from the site is, is to be. Once a project is in place, you're basically doing nighttime metering. You go out with a light meter to, to evaluate if, if there's a question or complaint about potential non-compliance with the ordinance.
Those measurements are actually made, Ron?
If, if it's, yeah, if it's necessary to, to address a complaint, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, all right, go ahead.
I, I think one of the major challenges you're going to run into is not so much residential lighting, but commercial. Most of the car dealers will tell you that they, for the obvious reasons, keep their lights on over most of their property during the night to prevent bad people from taking their cars. And there've also been complaints about extended lighting at Goday. So I, I think we have a lot of things to look at, not just the residential side of things, but the commercial side also. And trying to mix what makes sense for them and works for, for everybody else.
I, I had one other question, if I could ask it. In, in section D8D, it says, "In appropriate locations and circumstances, the town may extinguish or dim streetlights after 11:00 PM." Does the town have this capability?
We will. We're in the process, the town is, of acquiring the streetlights that are, that are, that aren't currently owned by the town. And then converting those over to LED, sort of a smart technology where they will, the town will have the ability to control the brightness of, of lights. They could turn individual lights on and off remotely. It's a pretty, pretty cool technology. So yes, we will have the ability to, to do that in the future.
Good. So since Peter has reviewed this, would the next step be a workshop?
That's, yeah, that's what I, I suggested in the memo, is if the board's comfortable with the draft as it sits today, I think that's the, the next step, is to have a public workshop, allow the public to provide any input. And then, you know, following that, send it along to the town council.
Do we need to wait till we have in-person meetings for the workshop?
That's, that's a tough call. I mean, it's, it's not required. You know, we've decided on a couple of others' things to wait for in person. But if you're, if you're ready to get going on it, it's not, you know, we can certainly go ahead with a virtual meeting.
I, I'd like to suggest we move forward with a virtual meeting on this.
Okay.
If there's no objection from members of the planning board, I'd like to suggest Ron set up a Zoom workshop on this proposed ordinance. Is that okay with everyone?
Paul? Well, I was wondering, and if, if we're going to do this, I think our next item, we're going to talk about, kind of lends itself to the same kind of treatment.
We can deal with that, right, straight away, Art?
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone to have Ron set up a virtual public workshop on this topic?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Ron, and do that.
When might that happen?
Well, I'll do my usual thing. I'll Zoom. I mean, I'll doodle you guys and.
But we got a bunch of things coming up, you know, we got special meeting requests, there's a lot going on between now and the end of the year. So let's just be conscious of, of that. I know you won't run.
Yep.
I got, I got a question.
Go ahead, Michael.
Would this be handled by, would this be handled by, like, a subcommittee of the planning board or the whole planning board? Would, would the whole planning board be involved?
Usually a workshop is the whole planning board.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Ron, you can go ahead with that. The next item is five H. Review and provide recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to section 400. Definition in section 725 of the Middletown zoning ordinance regarding ground-mounted solar voltaic installation, including design requirements for all arrays and specific provisions for arrays mounted on carports and canopies. Ron, do you want to introduce us?
Sure. So what prompted this is some recent interest expressed by some folks about possibly installing carports with solar panels on top within parking, commercial, commercial parking lots. Our current zoning ordinance doesn't address that in any way. And the building official at the time was, I guess, concerned that, he was questioning how he would handle that, whether he would consider it a, a ground-mounted solar array that doesn't meet the, the height requirements, or if it's a, or if it's a standalone structure with roof-mounted solar panels. It's really, you know, you could go either, either way with it. And the thought was, we need to allow, within the zoning ordinance, way to address store, uh, canopies, solar canopies that might be installed in parking lots. So that's, that's kind of what started this conversation. I've also included some additional potential modifications to the, to the ground-mounted solar array ordinance. And I've talked about this with you in the past, where in residential districts, I think the language is a little bit loose and allows, in residential areas, perhaps a larger solar array than what we had envisioned. So I've tightened up that language a little bit to ensure that there's the area of land dedicated to the solar array is no more than 25% in residential districts, just to, again, try to control that a little bit. Then there was some additional modifications to address potential impacts on wetlands and wildlife that Rita had, had suggested. So, you know, there's a few different things going on in this. I, you know, as I, I think Art was kind of beating us to the punch, I had suggested that there be a public workshop to, to review these items as well. We can certainly talk about any questions that you all may have for tonight, though.
Comments from the planning board?
I, I've just got one. I think there was an installation of a ground-mounted solar unit in the neighborhood just to the south of me in Slate Hill. I can't confirm that, but I heard that. But I'll, I'm going to go over and take a look and see what they have going on. So.
Bill?
So, yeah, I, I agree, Ron. I think a, a public workshop is in order. However, I think the solar-mounted stuff is, is, is going to be much more controversial than the lighting. They need to be separate, and frankly, I don't know if we should be doing this virtually. I, I don't, I think the lighting can be done virtually, but I'm not so sure this can be done virtually. There's a lot, there's a lot going on with this, with, with solar voltaic and a lot of, pretty sensitive topic, I think. So, so I would caution on doing, doing, doing a virtual public workshop for that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The only thing I would, I would say, and, and I agree, the, the solar arrays are much more in-depth and potentially controversial issue. But I don't know when we're going to be having in-person hearings. It could be, you know, certainly easily not until the spring or beyond. And right now, the regulations that we have on these are relatively thin. And so it, it, it would make sense if the board is available to try to tighten these things up a little sooner rather than later, excuse me.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
So Peter, on that, you know, we, we go round and round about having virtual meetings versus in-person, as much as we want to get back there. I just, and I guess legally, we can do this. I understand that. But sometimes, you know, it might come back to bite us, and, you know, we got to kind of pick our battles here on, where we can go, maybe we, maybe we hit the, hit the real high points, Ron, first initially, and then more, a more comprehensive look at it down the road.
Other comments?
John Schumow, Bill.
Go ahead, Joe.
I, I agree with Bill. I think this topic with the solar is far, far more important than the, than we possibly can understand. You'll have people coming out of the woodwork, putting them on cars before you know it. And everybody's going to want an exemption, and how big a carport has to be. And it's quite complicated, and I think it's going to take us a long time to work through this.
Other comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have an idea, and I would maybe recommend, as a preliminary step, that we look at, let's try to identify some other communities that are ahead of us on this and look at some of the steps they've taken and some of the things they've adopted and see if we can, you know, glean some insights from that. You know, you, Arizona, California, you drive around, and I mean, they're, these things are everywhere. Carports and shopping centers. So it's been done, and it's been done very successfully. So rather than start from scratch, I think it would be beneficial, and, you know, I'm not sure, Ron, if that's you, Rita, myself, if we could weigh in with some, hey, let's look at certain, you know, high-end communities and how they've dealt with this. And that would be a good first step, and it addresses, Bill, some of the concerns that have been raised tonight about it's a hot topic, people are going to want it, a lot of input on it. And, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to misstep. And maybe because we can't meet in person, it's good to kind of try to hit the, hit the highlights and then drill down from there.
Maybe the low-hanging fruit, you know?
Yeah.
That we need to take care of.
I mean, it's been done before all over the country. We're, we're, you know, we're not starting from scratch. That's all I'm saying.
I'm all for pirating off some other community, absolutely. Take it.
Other comments? Ron, I have three specific comments on the draft.
Okay.
In the very first paragraph, number 400, one, two, three, four, in the fifth line, you mentioned parking lot. And I believe that's the only place where parking lot is mentioned. And when I read that, I had this vision of a huge parking lot, putting a roof over it in order to put solar panels on it. So I suggest striking parking lot from, from that sentence.
Well, maybe it's just a rewording, because they would be, in most cases, within parking lots. But, yeah, you're right, it's not going to cover the entire parking lot. It's going to be canopies within the parking lot. So I'll, I'll work on the language.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's way too forgiving the way it's written.
Yep.
The second comment is under 725. Let's see, you've got, it would be one, two, three, four, and five, the last line where you say determined by the zoning official. Since that refers to landscaping, shouldn't we have the tree warden do that now?
Yeah, I think, let me look at that again, but, yeah, we just did.
Comment is, on the next page, B1, where you talk about shall not exceed 25% of developable, developable land.
Yep.
Should we add or 10,000 square feet, whichever is smaller? Because as you get to the larger lots, 25% is a lot of area.
That's, yeah, that's a policy question. If that's what you would like to do, that's certainly something we can add.
Which brings up the.
That's what I would suggest.
About all the controversy.
And in that regard, one of the issues we're looking at is, is there a size at which these things should require a special use permit or some other level of approval? Rather than, rather than just development plan review, so.
There might be some low-hanging fruit, though, we can, we can hit, Ron, to, to cover, like Pete says, we're a little thin. Maybe we can hit the stuff that we know is not going to be that hot button and try to do a public workshop on not only knowing that down the road, we can do a comprehensive look.
So maybe I can go with Peter, go through what, you know, what we have so far and pick, pick those items, the low-hanging fruit out and try to, try to make it work for a, a virtual meeting.
Do you want to come back to the planning board or just go to the workshop?
I don't know. I, I don't really know what it's going to look like at this point, so.
Why don't we plan to bring it back to the planning board, Ron?
That sounds good.
Any other comments on this? Item is 78, status report. Any comments on the status report?
Mr. Chairman, I, I did speak earlier this week with regard to the marijuana ordinance with Dwight Miriam, who's our consultant. He will be getting back to me either end of this week or beginning of next week with a timeframe on a rewrite of the ordinance, which is based on the newly adopted state regulations. And I will then, when I get that date, I'll coordinate with Ron and with the idea that maybe we can put a, schedule a meeting of the subcommittee.
Luke John Schumow in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any comments on the project updates?
No, they're very helpful. Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me?
Go ahead.
All right. Yes, I was concerned, I had mentioned to you previous. All right. Yes, I was concerned. I had mentioned to you previously about the, the construction at the airport and that Forest Avenue is being inundated with huge gravel laden trucks. And this is from seven in the morning until maybe one, two, three in the afternoon. And I'm not talking about one or two trucks. I'm talking about a lot of trucks. So I went, I, I did go up to the airport and I was told that although they are working on the runways, they, they are very concerned about the area adjacent to the runways. I guess it's where they keeping the, some of the planes or something. But I did ask when all of this would be finished and the comment was they were hoping for Thanksgiving. So I thought that I would just bring it up to the board because I don't think that the town of Middletown was informed that the airport was, the runways were going to be under construction and that our roads would be inundated with huge heavy trucks. And I did follow one of the trucks because I was going over to my veterinarian in the, in Tiverton, and the trucks were going over that way, of course, most of them West Main Road and then across the Secana River Bridge. And I don't know where they're getting the gravel, but that's what they're doing. They're getting the gravel and then returning. So I just thought of a point of interest.
Well, it is interesting that, is, is there any requirement for the town to be notified of work like that?
I have no idea, but I don't think they were.
We don't, we don't have jurisdiction on state property. It's a, it's a state project, not state property and the town doesn't have jurisdiction.
No, but it would have been a common courtesy, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah. So BJ didn't get the word, the runway is being extended to 10,000 feet.
I don't think so, but who knows if we're not being informed of anything.
All right, let's see. Use, the use table subcommittee is on hold. Is there anything else beyond that, Bill?
No, that's still on hold.
And we heard from Peter on marijuana. BJ, anything on the tree commission?
They've been meeting. They've been meeting in, on Karen Day's deck and in her garden. I don't know. Oh, and one time when it was raining, I think that they met inside. They're continuing with their, with the fundraising and with the getting together some of the names of people who may be interested in street trees coming up next year.
Thank you. Michael, anything on open space and fields?
They, they haven't had a meeting recently. I, you know, so I, I don't, there hasn't been any minutes or anything like that published. So the only thing I know is that they're still working on scoring different tracts of land in the town, you know, for potential, you know, maybe something to get, that the town could consider purchasing for recreational purposes for neighborhoods in the town. I guess that's, that's the general gist, I think, of what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. We heard from Joe on conservation commission. Anything more, Joe?
I'm just looking, Mr. Chairman, at mine, Jim Gedney's notes that went to Ron this afternoon on our public hearing on conservation commission last night. And we had a really full agenda. And I think we heard about two of the five items that were on there. So I know there are going to be some other applications that have been pushed that we reviewed last night, that in our next hearing, I'll be able to weigh in a lot more detail on. But yeah, there's a lot going on there.
That's good to hear. For a while, there not much was happening. So that's good to hear, Joe.
When it rains and pours.
Yeah. Art, anything on the planning commission, Quinac Island Planning Commission?
Absolutely not. I think they're going to be in hull defilade until after we get through this COVID adventure.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there anything else anyone wishes to bring up at this meeting?
I have, I have a question, Ron. Polo Center addition, did that not trigger development plan review? Do you off the top of your head, is that an addition that's smaller? It seems, I think it's the Polo cleaners, right?
Yeah, they, they did not reach the threshold and
I thought.
As I recall, it's been a long while since I looked at that. I believe that they were going to meet all the design requirements and, you know, in terms of the natural siding and whatnot. So there was no waiver requests. So that, that's why the board didn't see it.
Thank you.
Anything else anyone wishes to bring up before we adjourn? Thank you all very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Talking.
Is there any discussion? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Ron, thanks so much.
Sure.
Rita, thank you too.